Wednesday, March 21st, Urban Renewal Commission Meeting. And I guess we need to poll the board there, and we'll have the award-winning Nancy Ied, please poll the board.
All right. And here we are. Commissioner Neely.
Here.
Commissioner Pauli.
Here.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Yates.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Mum. Commissioner Edgar.
Here.
And Chair Shaw.
Here.
All right. First order of business, I want to welcome Carol Pauli to the Urban Renewal Commission.
Thank you.
Okay. Tonight, we are going, we've got some discussion items here, one of which is going to be the Urban Renewal Project Prioritization Brainstorming Session. And Mr. Eric Underwood is going to inform us of this, and we're going to have an active little discussion here. Eric, take it away then.
Hopefully, it will be a productive storm, so I hope you brought your, all your brains. So, do we have a screen? Can I, sorry, all right, that's all right. To start off with a, just kind of a brief presentation, which is just roughly a brief summary or recap of the Urban Renewal Plan, the goals and the activities in the plan. And so, we'll go through that briefly, and then we'll get to the meat of the discussion tonight, which is the brainstorming piece. All right. So, like I said, it's basically a summary, and starting off with the goals. So, these are the goals that are stated in the Urban Renewal Plan. They're also in the Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Futures Document, the Economic Development Strategy. So, the goals, as when you were, when you first became commissioners for the Urban Renewal Commission, you accepted these as the goals for the plan. And so, they are to improve the traffic capacity and safety of pedestrian facilities, parking recreation facilities, and other public facilities within the area; to improve the renewal area as a commercial and employment center; and stimulate private development within the area; and to fulfill metro-region 2040 growth concepts that are consistent with the city's comp plan. So, the activities are listed in the plan under certain categories. Those categories consist of transportation, parks and open space, development and redevelopment assistance, public facility and service improvements, public infrastructure, planning and administration, and property acquisition. And what is on the slide here is exactly what is in the plan. So, the transportation improvements include the McLaughlin Boulevard corridor through the renewal area, Washington Street corridor between Route 213 and Seventh Street, Seventh Street corridor through the renewal area, Main Street corridor from Route 99E to Clackmont Cove, the Clackmont Cove area, transit linkages to facilitate public transportation, I-205 interchange improvements and other improvements to serve Rossman landfill site, street improvements in the Oregon City Shopping Center area, street improvements to the railroad avenue, streetscape modernization throughout the project area, Amtrak improvements on and off-street parking throughout the project area. And further detail in the plan lists the actual areas for the on and off-street parking. Activities also include parks and open space and recreation improvements, which consist of Clackmont Park, river access and frontage improvements, Willamette Riverfront Promenade, downtown core area, end of Oregon Trail area bounded by railroad tracks to the west, Highway 213 to the north, and Abernathy Creek to the east and south. Abernathy Creek corridor, McLaughlin, Bluff Promenade. Third category is development redevelopment assistance. And there are two forms of this redevelopment assistance, redevelopment through new construction, and preservation, rehabilitation, and conservation. So, in the redevelopment through new construction, the commission is authorized to set financial guidelines, establish and provide below-market interest rate and market rate loans, and other programs as deemed appropriate. And the preservation, rehabilitation, and conservation is virtually the same. Next category is public facility and services improvements, which includes meeting, conference, educational, or cultural facilities, facilitate supporting, facilities supporting the identity of the area, such as plazas, gateways, and public art, and other public building facilities. Under public infrastructure, the commission is authorized to take part in projects that involve water, wastewater, stormwater, and utility relocation. Now, all of these categories, it says, not limited to, so you're not limited to these that I'm listing off here. There are others that you can place in here as we move along through the plan. The next category is planning and administration, which includes preparation of Urban Renewal Plan, master plans for Urban Renewal, for the Urban Renewal Area, transportation plans, miscellaneous land use and public facility studies during the course of the U R Plan, marketing activities, personnel and other administrative costs, and management of the plan. The last category is property acquisition, and the commission is authorized to acquire property where detrimental land uses or conditions exist, and where actions are necessary to remove blighting influences. Also, where it is determined by the agency that the property is needed for the following purposes, public improvements of facilities, and redevelopment. So, with that being said, I've generated a list of, whoops, a list of activities that we are, that are currently underway, along with activities that have been proposed over the last few months, whether they've come about through staff suggestions, or staff seeing an opportunity, through individual commissioner suggestions, and through environmental or economic, the economic environment or change. So, as you see here on this spreadsheet, these are the current activities that we're involved in. And the proposed, I've got it here, but I've also listed it here. I'm sorry for the clutter. I mean, it looks pretty bunched up there, but I can go through that. So, I thought we could leave this one on the screen to compare it with this list here. So, this is verbatim to the activities proposed on your Excel sheet there. So, I'll just go through that. So, actually, it's the other way around. So, the proposed is going to be up there. So, the proposed, hello? Okay. So, the proposed activities are up there on the spreadsheet, and the activities that are underway are listed here on the flip chart. So, under transportation, what we're doing now is the McLaughlin Boulevard corridor through the renewal area. We're involved with the Main Street corridor 99E and Clackmont Cove improvements, the I-205 interchange improvements, the Jug Handle project. We just started on the Train Depot, talking about identifying a use for that, and the Oregon City Shopping Center area street improvements. I may not be right on that one, Nancy. You might.
Those will be included in the McLaughlin.
Okay, okay. And parks and open space, of course, we're working on the DDA for the Clackmont Cove and working out that design. The development redevelopment assistance, we've got the facade grant program, and we've just approved the adaptive reuse rehab grant program as well. Public facility and services improvements, municipal elevator exterior improvements, downtown pedestrian alleyways, they're currently under design. For public infrastructure, we're working on the Clackmont Cove again. Planning and administration, we're, we've decided to aggressively market the infill sites downtown, 10th and Main and 12th and Main, and we're not doing anything on the property acquisition at this point. So, that's what we're doing. And I'm going to take these off and put them over there so we can reference them as we discuss this. Okay. So, now for the next step, as we move forward, think about the projects that have been proposed, and we move forward with development for the district. I thought it might be good to have a conversation about maybe creating some guidelines or some guiding principles, or what I like to call core values. That's been working quite well with the consortium that we're involved with in the Blue Heron Site. It's a set of guidelines that, it covers a broad scope, it gives some direction when we're thinking about development, yet it's not really restrictive, and so it leaves it kind of flexible as well. Thank you. So, example, the core values, and I'll just read through the core values of the Blue Heron And some of these may or may not work for the commission as well. The first one that the consortium has come up with is public access. They feel that's important to incorporate in any development that occurs at Blue Heron. Historical and cultural interpretation, economic development, and habitat restoration. And so, before we get into talking about prioritizing the projects, I would just like to have a discussion with the commission if they feel it's necessary to have a discussion on the core values, or creating core values, and what those might be.
Are you talking about broadly, or were you focusing on Blue Heron at the beginning?
No, about, for the district, not the Blue Heron.
Well, my, my, one of my key issues is, in a sense, having a return on investment. Being able to quantify a, that we receive a tax increment gain that covers investments that we put out in, in dollars. So, that as one of the key, or one of the most important criteria, is ensuring that there is, that we're receiving a, an ROI tax increment gain on our dollars that we put out.
Kathy Roth, Commissioner Roth has got, has signed up here, so.
I signed up yesterday.
Did you?
Something I haven't seen on any of this, and is twice last year, we asked for a visualization process through Urban Renewal, and we voted to have that done.
Okay.
And it seems to me that that would be very important to, to get the whole big picture before we break it down into all of these little pieces.
Okay. Well, we can list that as one of our activities, and have that be a priority.
Okay.
So, as we get, remind me of that, as we get through this, we can list it as one of the activities and discuss it then.
Okay. Commissioner Yates.
I have two points. One, in response to Paul's suggestion, I, I think everybody can agree on that, Paul. The problem is how you interpret it, because I have a fundamental disagreement with you on the, on the, on the payback on a public investment like a sidewalk. I think sidewalks are potentially very, very beneficial in terms of incremental tax increment development, because nice sidewalks, nice street lamps get people to invest. And so, I don't think that you can easily calculate return on investment. So, I think we could all say, oh, yeah, return on investment, we don't do anything that's not got a good return on investment. But the problem becomes, how do you evaluate that for something which is a little loose in terms of where the payback is? So, that's one point. Second point is, it seems to me there are a couple of things about core values. I think it's really important to have, to have agreement amongst us on substance and process. I think the biggest issues that I've seen have been about process, not substance. And I don't know how you want to develop that, but I'd like to put on core value consensus, because I don't think we've had consensus. And I'd like to develop something where we do get consensus, and if we don't get consensus, I'd like to have a vote. That's where I've been for years, and that's where I still am. I think we can reach consensus, but if we don't reach consensus, it seems to me we shouldn't be acting. So, that's my.
Well, hopefully, the intention for tonight was to reach a consensus on all the core values that we have there on the.
Well, so, I think the core value to me is consensus.
Is consensus.
So, Commissioner Pauli. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, I kind of, I have a big-picture visualization thing to add, to kind of keep in mind when all the decisions are made. Cultivating, it kind of goes back to the heart of urban renewal for blighted areas. So, cultivating resources, processes, and investment in underutilized or affected areas.
Okay. So, everybody in agreement with that? Okay? So, you have to.
I know. You want it short?
Yeah.
Boy, that's tough.
It's good.
So, I'll start with cultivating.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move to, was that it? Commissioner Neely.
Making, and Plaza Seventh Street as well, making this a destination area.
Yeah. All right. Commissioner Peterson.
Yeah, I just want to kind of echo what Phil said about return on investment. I think that there's quantitative and qualitative returns on investment, and we're not going to always be able to tie a specific number. Some of that stuff is going to be unknown, some of it's going to be qualitative, and if we're just looking at a pure dollar-on-dollar return, I don't know if we want to always make that.
So, would it be safe to just state return on investment, both qualitative and quantitative?
Yeah, I think so.
Cover it. Okay.
Okay, so, considering the items he gave us from the.
The Blue Heron.
From the Blue Heron project there, are any of those items on there of value to what we're doing here this evening? For instance, I think maybe public access is maybe relevant for us here. But I'm not sure about, well, I think the historical culture interpretation maybe is what Commissioner Pauli was kind of going after too. So, economic development, yeah, probably those three. I'm not sure about the habitat restoration, that's probably per project there, but as far as overall core value for this.
Yeah.
Commissioner Edgar.
I, you know, we also need to, this, improving the economy and creating permanent family wage jobs here in Oregon City locally. If we want to create a sustainable community, we're going to have to take steps, and those steps that we take that bring businesses, create opportunities where businesses can light here, that create salary-type income that's, that's income taxable, are those types of things which create, we've got, we have to be very high up on our list, and as, in a prioritization, at least, in my opinion.
Well, in, in thinking of a broad scope, maybe we could stretch it out a little bit further, and think that, you know, not every project, like if you're building sidewalks or you're creating, or you're just putting in park benches or whatever, it's not going to create jobs. However, it might create temporary jobs for people to come in and build these things. So, if we're talking about creating jobs.
There's a great deal of difference between permanent family wage jobs, increasing employment, permanent employment in and around Oregon City, is that, as against somebody coming in on a construction project, doing a construction project, and leaving. And so, we, we have to have a focus on, on trying to improve economic activity, permanent economic activity with family wage jobs in and around Oregon City.
Would it be feasible to include both?
Yeah, but one has got a very high priority.
Right.
Right, sure.
I agree.
Good.
Okay. And so, if we add the economic development piece, we're covering the businesses, creating businesses, creating development, and then we have the jobs piece that creates, with a focus on the permanent jobs, by creating both temporary and.
Yeah. Commissioner Neely.
I think, I mean, although I think those one, two, three are related, it doesn't hurt to have jobs creation as a core value of our project, and I, I think it's just worth bringing down.
Okay, okay.
And I think it's core, the one, two, and three are all trying to address that, but it doesn't hurt to bring it up.
Okay.
Yes.
And do we need to put in economic development, or do you think the others?
I think we need to have economic development.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yeah, I was, job creation, to me, was going to be under qual, part of the qualitative, but I guess it, it, I think we're covering it, so. My comment was before we added job creation and economic development to that list, so.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't hurt to be somewhat redundant.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, you can overlap a little bit, I think.
Yeah.
And so, did we agree on the historical and cultural interpretation, or is that?
It's, yes.
Lob share.
You know, I don't know, I don't know if it's low. I, I look at making Urban Renewal District a destination would include that.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't see any harm in maybe making little submarks under there that would include that.
Okay.
Right under number three. Anybody disagree?
No, we call ourselves the historic downtown.
Yeah, we've got, we're cultivating the resources, so, our resources are kind of the historic nature of the city here, so I think it's probably a little definition of number two, how we want to define that.
Sure. So, we can just continue that saying, including historical and cultural interpretation?
Yeah, I think I'd put maybe historical, just in parentheses on number two there, but actually, we can just write all this stuff down. We're going to probably, we're going to, yeah, just write it down as six.
Okay.
We'll massage it through here, so. Now, do we see, just looking at this Blue Heron thing, do we see public access of any, as one of our core values there?
Yeah, I think, I think. Destination might cover that.
Okay.
In my opinion, I don't.
All right. Okay.
So, six a good number?
Gets it started, yeah.
Gets it started?
Yeah.
Good, great, all right. So, I'll go ahead and rip this off and place this over here on the. That's Nancy. So, are we having fun yet? So, now it's time to roll our sleeves.
There we go.
This is the most we've accomplished in a long time, actually.
Yeah.
In probably several years.
Can I, can I throw rain on that comment, Rocky? Because I've got to say, three or four of those seem to me to be, quite a few of them seem to be just kind of like return on investment. We can all agree on them, but I don't think it really gets us to where we want to go, because does doing the street improvement on 99, which I think is a good idea, is that a job creation thing? Paul would say no. I mean, Nancy would say, I mean, would say yes.
Right.
I don't think any of those helps particularly. Sorry, I don't think it's very helpful. I'm not sure that it's not useful to go through this exercise, but I'm not sure we're nailing or narrowing down anything by having those very broad core values.
I think we may maybe get there, though. That's what I'd hoped for.
There's, there's one of them up there that really captures almost the essence of what every urban little agency across the state wants to do, in fact, cities want to do, and that is the cultivating resources, it's cultivating investment. I mean, when, when I think about a job, or a street, or any of that, we're really talking about investments in the community to create an economy.
But, but it seems to me a more useful exercise might be to decide as a consensus or not, whether or not we agree with Paul that you shouldn't be making investments in public infrastructure, or you agree with.
I, no, that's, I wouldn't make that statement.
Okay, well, or whether you.
That's right.
I mean, to get to specifics is really what's important in terms of how you interpret this thing.
You're on your way there. There'll be lots of things to dispute here in a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, we're getting there, we're getting there.
Okay.
I'm not that conservative. All right. Okay.
All right, all right, here we go.
All right, so, now we're moving to the other side of the room here.
I better need some sugar.
We're going to go through the activities that have been proposed in one way or the other over the last few months, to try to get a consensus on these, and a priority level, and how the commission would like to move forward, and a timing on that as well. And I'm going to use a blank pen with this one. So, these are up in no particular order. The first one that I have there is analyzing economic development opportunities at the North End. And so, that's kind of been waiting to get on the agenda for some time. And basically, what the exercise for this one is, is we'll go through and discuss the project, what the intended results are of that project, or the impact or the benefit, however you interpret it, or all three. We'll talk about the priority level for the commission, where they want to, how they want to direct their energies, and then when to move forward. All the while, thinking about current staffing capacity for the U R C, the current workload, which we've listed over there. And, you know, right now, it looks like it's pretty full, so maybe if we begin to add a lot of these, we might need to take some of the existing ones away, or move them down on the priority ladder. So, again, we're back here at the development opportunities at the North End, and so I'd like to ask the commission what they see as the results. What are the results out of this project? What would you like to see? What would the impacts be, or the benefits, to the Urban Renewal District?
I've got Commissioner Neely on here. Is that, let me, want to address, okay?
I guess the first thing we've got to demonstrate is we can do anything there, and we have the, we have the properties, and I know you're actively marketing those, but in order, I think in order to tree your development in that area, we got to demonstrate that something can be done in that area, and it seems to me those, those two pieces of properties are important in that, that effort.
The two pieces of property.
That we own.
Okay.
Okay, so, the North End, we're talking about just that, or we going clear to the landfill?
I think, when I talk, since he put my name there, and I was talking about the North End, I actually was talking about from Town Street to Abernathy Creek. I think, I think when we come to the landfill, and, and even the cove to some degree, those are those kind of blighted areas that I think can be treated a bit differently. In one sense, this might be considered that, but there, there's still economic value there that is, that's currently there, and, and. is currently there, and, so that's what I was talking about. I was not talking about the landfill, or I wasn't talking about the cove.
Yeah, so we, or do we want to add that to, to this item here?
My preference would be have that as a separate item, personally.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Does everybody agree, agreement with that? Okay, so it's the two properties?
An agreement in terms of limiting the scope of this discussion to the area south of Abernathy Creek, is that what we're doing now?
That, when I talked about the north, the north end, that's what I was talking about.
Because it seems to me there's a really important fundamental issue dealing with the entire north end, that it's broader than that, and that is whether or not it should be, continued to be zoned the way it is, or whether it should be an industrial zone. I've always wondered, since I moved into this town six years ago, why that's zoned the way it is, why isn't it zoned industrial? Because it strikes me as a natural industrial area, because it's across the street from the dump, after all, and it smells during the summer. And I'm just kind of wondering if, I mean, I know it's a planning commission issue, but isn't the, isn't it kind of important, I mean, maybe everybody disagrees with me on this, that it's appropriate to zone, but I just wonder about whether or not it makes sense to.
Are you talking about the landfill?
Talking about the landfill.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, I thought that'll be a separate topic.
Okay. Well, so we've got to break it down into those two parcels on Main Street, and then, and then the, I almost got three, if you want to do the cove, the landfill, and those two properties.
I've done this detailed analysis, by the way, of all the city-owned properties, and I'm ready to bring it back to this, bring it to the city to present it, which goes through a, the beginning of developing an asset management report on all of the city properties that are held. And we have those properties, as an example, in discussions with people at Providence Hospital. They've been looking to site a professional building, and they would like to have something down close to 205, where they get high visibility, and one of the locations could be, as an example, Clackamas Landscaping Property, because it would fit into their criteria of where they might want to look. But if we are limiting our perspective to what we are talking about, we have property next to McDonald's, we have obviously the properties next to Kentucky Fried Chicken, and the other properties around, but we have so many pieces of property that are fallow, that just are not being productive, that could create economic development and job creation, and bring in investment. And many of these properties are in the north end, and provide those types of things. So if we were, if as an example, Providence Hospital decided to build a large professional building next to, on the Clackamas Landscaping Property, that could change the whole dynamics about people looking at the Rossman landfill. Just because we took aggressive action and started promoting and selling and trying to do things that facilitated activity, and people saying, hey, we're open for business, this could change things. And until we go out and start doing those things, and looking at everything, we are, we are shorting part of the deck. We have 52 cards in that deck, and if we start pulling out all of the jokers and all of the high count cards, pretty soon, we've hurt ourselves.
Okay, Commissioner Neely.
Well, I'm going to come back to Paul's comments in a moment, but going, the first comments, well, I guess with his comments in general. I have no problem in including, in terms of economic development, lands owned by the Urban Renewal District, or lands owned by the city, I think that's fine, in terms of marketing, I think, because they're all within the Urban Renewal District. I guess my question is that, when we're talking to different entities, we ought to be talking to them through our Economic Development Director. I mean, if, if that's what, and they might be, but if that's what Willamette Falls, excuse me, Providence Willamette Falls Hospital wishes to do, I would say they ought to be coming directly to the city and talking about that.
I agree.
But if we don't tell?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, now, that, you, if we, if we run into people that are, have development interests, I don't think we're the ones that are marketing specific pieces. We should direct those people to talk to the appropriate people at the city.
Okay.
I don't have a buzzer, so.
Yeah.
Just try that. Paul, I think, you know, I know what you just said a minute ago, when you said, gosh, I don't want to limit, you know, if we focus on these two properties, then what if something else comes along? A lot of this, a lot of work you guys are going to do, and in fact, a lot of work we do, for the, before the city or the URC, is opportunity-driven as well. Things happen. I mean, last year, in our goal setting, Blue Heron went from maybe two years down the road to, how about tomorrow? I mean, it literally sidetracked our whole goal setting, and budget, and everything else. So sometimes it is opportunity-driven. I think, though, that I would want to remind you that if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. I know you've heard that before.
That's right.
And so the exercise here is to kind of winnow down that. That doesn't foreclose, though, if an opportunity comes, you can adjust these priorities. If the opportunity comes, that's what we did last year, when Blue Heron came, we're going to adjust our priorities. And it was easier, because we had five commissioners instead of nine, but we still did it. So I would like to encourage you to think about these as guiding priorities, and then if an opportunity comes, we can adjust it.
Okay, Commissioner, or you, did you?
No, no, I wasn't quite finished. I think we're still, part of Paul's discussion there had involved city property. I don't know if you want, that hasn't gone down on the list at all, the marketing of city-owned and urban renewal property, and I think maybe that's, somehow, that should be written down, I don't know where it goes.
It's, it's, it's here.
Okay, if you come back to it, that's fine. We're just talking about the north end, and that's what triggered it.
Yeah, yeah, so I think I, let me see if I.
That's fine, no, no, you don't have to worry. If you say it, I'll believe you.
Yeah.
It's somewhere.
Okay, we're going to go to Commissioner Mum.
Thank you, and I apologize for being late. I do work for Providence Willamette Falls. As far as I know, they have nothing on the radar for the north end, but I can double-check on that. But I do encourage all of us commissioners to, if we have any inkling of any business wanting to develop here, to make sure we direct them to David Fraser and Eric Underwood, that's their job. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Roth.
Well, just because of my slowness here, can we very, make a very distinct description of the properties we're talking about at North End now?
Well.
Because we've kind of gone around.
Yeah, okay, so when I came here, it was on the list that Mayor Neely brought this up, and so it really wasn't defined, and so I've pretty much written it out verbatim as how I've seen it on the list. And so, I don't know.
You don't even, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so when I'm thinking, when I'm thinking north end, I'm thinking the whole north end of the district.
That's what I thought.
That's what I thought, too.
But it sounds like that's not what Doug was thinking, so.
Yeah.
That's one of the purpose, that's one of the reasons for this discussion, is to kind of get that out, and get the detail out, and decide what it is we're actually discussing.
In the last couple of years, especially on the commission, that the north end has been referred to really between 10th and, and essentially Abernathy.
Yeah.
As its own piece, kind of the, the buffer in between Main Street and what comes of the Cove or the Rivers properties. So I think it's that, that piece that bridges the gap between.
Okay.
The two, two big developments that are coming in the future, and the Cove and the Rivers, and how do we fill in that gap in between? That's how I've always looked at it, is the north end.
So then, let me ask, would that be the priority, to work on those now, as opposed to focusing?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, it's always been my thought, it makes more sense in a lot of ways, but.
It's just that we want a couple of pieces of property.
Yeah.
But, no, I would not, I would not put that as the top priority.
Okay, all right.
You know, so I guess, where do you put the Cove and the landfill, as far as, I mean, you know, when this first came up, the north end, I thought north, you know?
Yeah.
And so that's where I was going, so when you brought that up, I'm sitting there, eh.
Yeah, so, in that respect, I don't have the Rossman landfill up here, and I don't have the Cove, and so I was under the assumption.
And we also have the Oregon City Shopping Center, which.
Right.
And, that's in the north end, and we have the properties across the street from the Oregon City Shopping Center.
Right.
And we own them, and, and they are right in the gateway.
We don't own the shopping center.
No, but we own.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
On both sides of McDonald's.
I want to be clear, yeah.
That are, that are basically developable lots.
So I think what you're looking for is a definition of north end here.
Well, yeah, I, we'll need that to see what we're gonna, what we think the impact or the benefit would be.
So what you're suggesting after hearing all of this?
Is going to another piece of paper.
Well, let's go over here. So, let's say, north end.
Do we have a map of?
I don't know, do we have a?
Lots of maps, probably, huh? Yeah. That we could see.
Yeah, we have OC maps on?
Of the Urban Renewal District, yeah. Of just the district itself?
Oh, uh, let's see.
I think that Dave and he can work that.
That'd be great.
I think a map, math would be helpful.
Okay.
A visual. Yeah.
Betty, you weren't here, but we were talking about core values before you got here, and they're listed up here on the.
Yes.
Yeah, we were doing pretty well there for a while.
And then I gave it to you, is that what you're saying, Brian? I corrected it.
No, no.
I don't know if you have any comments with any of these, or?
I'll take a look at it, but you just wanted to leave it up there, I'll take a look at it.
I'll put it on this side, so you can see.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Brian, for throwing me under the bus.
There you go, Sig.
I'm good with that.
Good.
Thank you. I like the mic thing you have, too.
Thanks, yeah, I feel hip. Do a concert after.
I'm not sure if you're lip syncing, or.
I just don't have my answer routine down yet, so. Well, while we're waiting.
Yeah.
Maybe we can skip to another one. So, the next activity I have is the Train Depot use. We started on that, our last commission meeting, identifying uses. Okay, so, maybe we talk a little bit about what the benefit would be, and making tentative improvements there to that property. If we were to have business or some sort of use, what's the impact to the district?
I would, you know, I'd like, I'd like to call on our in-house real estate expert here, Mr. Peterson, and give us a little thought on your, you know, you've had time to think about this now, and, you know, whether we need to market that before we do anything, you know, and, or maybe save a piece of it for our, the Amtrak station part of it, and market the rest or something, okay?
Well, before you do anything, you kind of want to know what your goal is, because you can't really market, I mean, you want to have a direction and focus when you're marketing something. So, at the last meeting I was at, it sounded like we had a lot of good ideas that everybody was rallying behind, so it's almost a matter of seeing which one of those are, you know, most likely. It sounded like some of them are, if we're looking at a economic return, some of them are qualitative, you know, some of those like, you know, showing off some of our heritage, things like that. Some of them are qualitative and quantitative in terms of the economic, kind of fostering of new businesses, and some of those things. So, I think we just need to figure out which one of those things will fly, or if any of those are, you know, close to going, or if, if we just agree on all of those, those things, and want to just say, you know, basically direct you to go out and make it happen, and then it's just, then it's coming up with a game plan to make that happen, in my mind. And it sounds like, on the, you know, showcasing of the, of our heritage, and some of the interpretation center-type uses, that that could just start happening. And then on the other half, it sounded like you were going to do that as a incubator, business incubator, and that would be probably where we'd come up with a marketing plan to make that happen.
Well, and if I may interrupt, just a second, in thinking about this, and just thinking about the core values that we just created, the two that jump out to me with the Train Depot are job creation, because of the incubator idea, and the historical and cultural interpretation. Those are two big pieces for that piece. So that could be, that would be the impacts in the district. So, as you think about the impacts and the results, also think about the core values that we just created.
I attended a Clackamas County event on bicycle tourism.
Right.
And it was a three-hour event, and then I've been, we've had discussions, I'm also in the Clackamas County TSP Committee for Transportation. And one of the things that's kind of come out of this was the whole idea of, would this vision that Blaine Myers is kind of talking about, and we've passed it around, and the excitement in, in the tourism groups, in the transportation groups, about the idea of this being a bicycle place right there that would, where people could come by train, actually rent a bike, or ride a bike down to the, to the place, store it, potentially create a storage place underneath the plate, underneath the platform, and, and fan out, they're creating these bicycle lanes and plans to take people all the way along, let's say, Clackamas River Drive, out to Estacada, all the way up to Detroit Lake. And they're creating these maps and gaming how we can turn a, a people on bicycles into a multi-billion dollar revenue center for Clackamas County. And this would create jobs, bring people in, spending money. And they looked at the Amtrak Center and that station, and it was like, oh my God, this would be the most fantastic place, this could be the center of that universe. And so when I, you know, and I was, you're looking around at the eyeballs, and you're seeing them dilate with that vision of that opportunity, and it was scary. It's kind of like all of a sudden, I said, you know, you've got to come back and step back from it, because there was that level of excitement with the potential of that, and what it could mean to bringing people to Oregon City, and then they were talking, well, there's the wagon train across the road there, and we could do this, and we could do this, and we could do this, and all these people would be coming into the restaurants, and all of the restaurants and bars, and every place around, and, but they would put Oregon City on the map as a destination location.
And the return on the investment.
Would be very big, multi-billion dollars gains.
There we go.
And jobs.
Kind of like a sidewalk, isn't it?
Boy, you're trying to get me.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Roth, do you have something there? I see your name.
I think this is old.
It's old. Okay, I see you're still on there, and, okay.
I'm on there.
Rocky's on there.
Commissioner Smith, here we go.
So, I think the question, I don't know, all of these have so many details, and tonight shouldn't be about details. Tonight should be about, do we think the Train Depot should be dealt with, or not?
As a high priority.
And is a high priority. I think small projects like this, where we have a building that's empty, that's not being utilized, where we have lots that are empty that aren't being utilized, those need to be top priorities. So, so those are the first things that we can deal with, like now. And, so, I definitely personally see this as a top priority, one, because it has the ability to bring in jobs, et cetera, but we have vacant buildings that were just sitting there, that we're losing money on, and we need to, we need to not have that. So, I would put this definitely at top.
Send this down to Roth.
I don't know that I need sugar or caffeine, I'm.
I know.
I'm not sure if this is a payoff for something you said, or?
If we could step back just for a second, let me try to recap what I've.
We'll go, Eric.
Time to get one?
Yeah, that's it.
If I could step back just for a second, to catch up with you guys, what I've heard of the impact and the results is economic development, is one. Job creation.
Facilities in general, I think, used.
Finding a use for our empty facilities.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Aligning our efforts with county tourism.
Possibilities.
Yeah. It's metro term.
And they're, and they've, and they've got money.
Now we're talking.
Yeah, and it's...
Leveraging money, leveraging funds.
Yeah, there you go.
But it's, it's bigger than county, it's metro.
Yes.
What is the name of that program?
It's, it's, yeah. Oh, it's bikes, uh, I kept...
That bicycle by 2030 thing?
Intertwined.
Yeah.
Intertwined connects the trails.
No.
Well, in, in metro.
Well, Eric, you know what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Talked to them, all those important people in tourism.
Yeah, I got a list of them.
It brings a renewed, um, opportunity to refocus attention on Amtrak and rail and, and the possibility of that area down there, which we haven't done a great job of... We haven't done a great job of marketing the train station and the ability for people to get on there, we, we do it hit and miss, kind of, but I think this would, putting something down there that people can tangibly see allows us to refocus attention on that.
I have a, and I don't know how this works into this, but I want duck trains.
Duck trains? With a big bill on the front? I know what you're saying.
And I think, you know, bringing a whole bunch of people here to get on a train, to go to...
To go to duck games.
It would take all that traffic off the freeway.
Coordinated train traffic.
It would be a great thing for Oregon City, you know, you could have somebody that sold packaged lunches, or...
What they, what they do is they put a big barrel of beer in there.
Exactly.
And it's been known that people drink those.
We'd have to work with the railroad.
Yeah, I know, that's the thing, it's a hard trip. I was even thinking about wine touring, because there's so much traffic this morning up and down.
Yeah.
Each station, if, if everybody, all these stops were to renovate their stations and have wine tastings there, Amtrak could stop at these stations.
You've got six hours to wait for the next train, so...
Boy, we could do a lot of tasting.
They don't have to drive, drink and drive.
That's right.
Drinking and driving.
That's right.
Okay, all right.
All right, so we're, we're gonna, I think we're good on the results and the benefits.
We're good there for the...
And so the priority level, what I was hearing was one.
Yeah, we have a vacant building that, uh, needs to be done.
I insist.
One is low, oh, one is low.
No, we're...
Oh, I'm sorry, five is high.
Five.
One is low.
Five.
If you're gonna write duck trains, you better write duck trains plus shuttles.
Shuttles? Shuttles?
Shuttles.
Oh, shuttles, oh.
That's a new enterprise for us, we can, the trolley will take them.
The trolley.
There you go.
So it's a number five?
Okay.
Yes.
And since it's high priority, I'm assuming within one to three months.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we got our first one done.
This may be a detail, I'm just curious.
Yes.
You were talking about doing design work, um, on this.
Tenant, interior.
And I'm wondering, are we gonna do the design work before we identify a tenant?
No.
No.
Uh, I think we need to identify a use.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so, I've got a map of the district up there, and I can scroll up or down, because I don't know how to get rid of the top bar there. But, uh, maybe we could dim the lights on that one, and we can go back to the ECHDEV opportunities at North End, I think we were trying to define the North End.
Yes, can you move that so we can see them north end a little bit more?
Yes. Well... Yeah, I am not done yet. Well, let's reduce. All right, okay, I can capture all of it.
So two, five.
But we know 10th.
So we're not on North End? North End's down.
It's further down.
At least what we're referring to as North End is, is between 10th and Abernathy, so Singer Hill, and that's what we're referring to, but, for that.
So you don't wanna extend that, Rocky, you'll go from 10th to 213.
For the North End.
I don't care, I don't, I don't care what we, we called, I just wish, I want it to be distinct.
Right.
And, and I want it to be uniform, everybody thinking the same North End.
Yeah.
And, and, and so, um, making a distinction, let me, um, let me put forward my logic in this. I'm sure things would change once development occurs there, but, um, you, you've got Abernathy Creek that separates an area, and your access points are really very limited, you can get there on the Main Street extension, or you can get there across the Washington Street Bridge. It's, it, it isn't so well geographically connected with the rest of the Main Street area, whereas the, what I was talking about, the area between Abernathy Creek and 10th Street, is strongly connected to where we've had most of our, uh, development monies going, or our storefront monies going, is to the, to the other point, so I think, I think the big development opportunities are there, north of Abernathy Creek, I don't question that.
Right.
But I think that, uh, the economic strategy might be different for those two, two areas.
And when the, when the term "North End" came up, it was referring to the North End of Main Street, not the North End of the district.
You're, if I, you're, you're describing basically the part, the part of the city, part of the district, which still has a grid already, as a, as a, as a thing from the part that doesn't have a grid.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, so are we, uh, I guess we just have to agree on that, you know, get some consensus on that, of what do we define as the North End? Myself, I think it should go clear to 213, but I'm on the minority, it sounds like, so...
No, I don't think so.
I don't think we're the minority, we just need to establish.
The label, do we understand?
I mean, the label was referring to the North End of Main Street, not the North End of the district, when that, when that came up, it was, so that's why.
So we have North End.
But you see, it sounds like you see both of them working together.
Right.
All the way, so why not include it all?
I think it all should be included.
Well, because you wouldn't have, you wouldn't, assuming anybody agreed with me about the industrial use as opposed to something else, you wouldn't wanna make the grid part industrial, you were, I'm talking about the area, you know, north of the train station, really, you know, where the, where Clackamas Landscape Supply is, where the welding shop is down there, which is already quasi-industrial, it's all, we're basically industrial. Whereas the stuff that's south of it is, is sort of quasi-retail office, beat-up retail office, but that's what it's been, so they're two distinct uses.
And that the rivers and the cove are already separated in themselves, so I think this, you know, you have the, the mill site, you have the rivers and the cove, and you have this space in between, and I think there needs to be some reference to what that space is in between, and I think this at least discusses that.
Should we just go with what the original was, Rocky, and just say North End Main Street?
I'd like us to do that, or something close to that, so we can move on.
Let's move on.
And I don't, I don't care which one you look at first.
Yeah.
Let's, let's continue on North End Main Street.
But I don't think this, I think this is an important thing, I don't think it's a top priority right now, but it's, it's definitely, you know, something that needs to be...
Yes.
Okay, and so, that being said, and we want infill development, job creation.
Yes. That goes to your two properties, right?
Hmm.
What else?
Specific focus on the...
What's the impact?
A specific focus on the 12th Street lot and the 10th Street lot, even though the 10th Street lot falls on the other side.
Was that covered in, in fill?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's covered.
That's infill.
Right, I wanted to, let me understand that, yeah.
We, we also have a parking lot out there.
And we have your parking lot.
And if we go back...
Oh, yes.
Well, it is a parking lot.
And when we're looking at infill development, we're also looking at mixed-use component, I know that's kind of been a theme for...
Well, there's a technical advantage of the North End, it's because we, down there, we have a lot of vacant lots, or a lot of buildings down there that are not necessarily of historic importance, and that, in a sense, facilitates some types of redevelopment, reuse, uh, easier than it does in the, in what I'll say core, from 10th South. And, um, and so it gives us greater opportunity to do massing, or to look at bigger picture-type, uh, infill o- objects or plans, uh, when we, within the North End. And it does provide us greater opportunity in the jobs component, where we are looking at, uh, bringing in not only investment, but, uh, creating permanent family wage jobs. And, uh, that, that has an area, we, as an example, it's the roofing company that went up there, and though they put some significant money into the building, they did bring some, some jobs and, and definitely made that area, uh, north on Main Street look better. And, uh, and they're a great complement to the city, we need more of them, and we have those opportunities along through that corridor that, uh, we should not lose track of.
Okay, so what priority level are we thinking about here?
Can I add one thing to this, that I think is really important, is that we need a grocery store in this area, and I know that's very specific.
I think that's gonna happen at the shopping center, isn't that part of their plan there?
I think it's part of their plan, but, uh, I don't think their first attempt was successful, from what I understand.
Yeah.
Okay.
So even, if it doesn't happen, it needs to go somewhere in this area.
Okay. Kind of a, kind of a...
The floodplain, that's right.
Kind of a, kind of a detail right now.
You're right, right.
Let's, so what priority level are we, uh, thinking about here?
What does staff recommend?
Well, we're, we're pretty aggressive, we're spending money to advertise these infill lots right now.
Hmm.
We're trying to get that mixed-use component going downtown and enhance that, so I would say we're kind of in the thick of it, it'd be a one for me.
Or a five.
A five, sorry, yeah.
Five. Eric, come on, Eric, you made up the scales.
I was doing this to remind you guys about it.
Stick with the program.
Low, okay, so it would be a five, yes.
So give it a five.
All right.
There we go, all right.
And so, that being said, I'd say one to three months.
Yep.
So we need to end by 6:15, I think, uh, I've been given a time limit, so...
We do?
We'll just keep moving right along here.
They're trying to come in to take our beautiful pictures.
Oh, I was wondering, I didn't know if you had a job interview or whatever.
All right, uh, the next, the next one that I had on the list was, uh, an idea to transfer the Stimson property into wetlands as part of the Jug Handle project.
Eric, could I just add something on that North End piece?
Yeah.
Um, this is a little bit of history for many of you that may not have been here when this was looked, looked at, and it may not necessarily be contemporary interest by the commissioner of the city or anybody at this point, but I know the Urban Renewal Commission was definitely interested in looking at how do we plan for light rail when we were talking about the Groco site.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And this area, be, in the North End, coming down Main Street, um, in the past, when light rail was looked at, years and years ago, this was a potential location for it to come down Main Street, and then it would come in from 15th Street, 12th Street, and do something in there, so I just wanted to let you know a little bit of history there.
Good point, good point, okay. We can move on to South.
Yeah, Stimson.
Oh, you got, uh...
We've got Stimson property.
Where is the Stimson property?
Well, I think he was just talking about that being a great spot for the, uh...
Yeah, I believe it's right...
This is where landscaping is, I mean, that's where landscaping is. That was to be a lumberyard, I mean, a mill, wood, lumber mills.
It used to be, yeah, it used to be a mill down in that way.
Right in there?
Right now.
Right here.
It's this chunk right here, and then the upper part up here.
This is right here.
Clackamas Landscape Supply is?
That's it, that's the Stimson property right here.
Right behind you.
All right.
And, you know, there's a little inconsistency in what we've been talking about, I think, we've talked, talking about that site as an, an opportunity for, well, I think we just suggested that we have Providence Hospital there, I think the same person's asking for a wetland to go there. And I, I don't, I think that may be talking about two sides of the track, because between the track and 205 was also Stimson Property.
Right, yes.
Yeah, so, and I don't, I, I think there is limited value to that area for development, frankly, the access to it would be very limited, it'd be off 15th Street, but it's, it's an area where the street starts to bend under 205, so if that's what we're talking about, wetlands, I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was, it's that property above that, that has now been dedicated to wetlands, and that falls out of the charter of what we should be holding as lands within the Urban Renewal. And, uh, that would be better put into the hands of Public Works, or Parks, or someone else, and, uh, we should be facilitating the transfer and moving properties into the hands of Urban Renewal that we can do, use, to create our economic development and, and, and business.
Well, the thing, the benefit, there's additional benefit to the wetlands, depending on how it's developed. Much of that area, of course, we, as we know, is in the floodplain, and we have balance cut and fill in the floodplain, and that has an opportunity for, um, fill, for another, for purposes of development. Uh, so in terms of the wetland development, it could be, I think, done in conjunction with development, uh, opportunities.
I, I think there's actually a net cut from the Jug Handle project for those wetlands as well, to be used.
But the, the key to it, we voted to have something to transfer some land, and so this is, right now, we're trying to identify what land should be transferred to the, uh, to the, from the city to the Urban Renewal Commission.
Okay, my, my thought on that is that it's already in the Urban Renewal District, and I think it comes down to a matter of what, whose name is on the title. Uh, because if it goes to the Urban Renewal District, once the Urban Renewal District is terminated, it's done, it's gonna go back to the city, anyway. But we can still act on it and develop it, if we need to develop it, because it's in the district, it doesn't matter who owns it, so, um, that being said, I don't know, other than it being a matter of, of whose name's on the title, I don't think you're, you're regulated, or you're constrained in any way, because the city owns it as opposed to the district.
Although it has caused us problems in the past.
Yes, it has.
Big ones.
What sort of problems? I haven't been to that one.
Think about it.
There's a company called Detroit Properties.
Okay, never mind.
Well, that was because we misidentified the property.
It was our own fault.
Okay, so what are we looking at here, Eric, I guess, is, uh, transfer of property, well, or Jug Handle?
I'm...
Could you kind of describe here what you're thinking about, or?
I don't think he's thinking about it.
Yeah.
Paul's thinking about it. I'm, I think the point is, whether it's private property, or city-owned property, or Urban Renewal Agency-owned property, we want to see it developed, and I think, uh, city property can be discussed by this Urban Renewal Agency, I don't think there's any issue there.
But if it got to a point where we're selling a piece of property to an entity that wants to buy it from us, and it's in our name, the, the revenue that would come from the selling of it would go back to, to paying off debts associated with Urban Renewal, that's positive, okay? And so, i- if, if there's a way that we become an active facilitator to making intelligent movement that creates revenue, jobs, improvements of economy, maybe we're better off in the charter of the Urban Renewal Commission and, on whatever it is, just because we're, uh, we're gonna put the pedal to the metal.
Yeah, and it could very be that way, and it could very well be that way if the commission decides that they wanna look at Urban Renewal that way, so there's one way to develop land, there's one way to dispose of land, is that's to make money, to make revenue, you can sell the property. Or the purpose of the Urban Renewal Commission to be, could be to develop the land, and work a good deal to get a good increment, uh, from the land, so it's, it's, it's up to the commission how they wanna look at it, and that, that's certainly a valid way to, to view that, um, but it's whether, you know, your, your sole purpose is to develop, or your purpose is to gener, or to make revenue off of, of the land, so...
Well, whichever one makes more revenue for the Urban Renewal Commission, and so, I, in the long haul, I, I perceive that if we don't turn some things around, there's going, the initiative that is being circulated, we'll have enough signatures, they will go to a vote, and the vote will fall, just like it happened in Estacada, and if they, if it happens that way, because we are not intelligent, we do not display enough, uh, backbone and, and, and get ourselves going, we don't come up with some winning projects, and, and, uh, the voters will shut the door on, on us totally. And so we have a window in front of us to, to get smarter, and, and I believe that window is, is being pulled down, and right now, um, we, we had better come up with some, uh, some ideas and some thinking that, that not only is... up with some, some ideas and some thinking that, that not only is positive for economic development, but it's positive in the eyes of the voters.
Okay.
Because the voters are going to have an opportunity to do a referendum on us, and if we're not smart, this tool that's important and valuable to the city may be cribbed significantly. And that's my perception.
In lieu of the hour, I think probably for this particular one, I don't think it's a high priority, in my opinion. I don't know about anybody else. I think you're going to have to bring back exactly what property we're talking about. I need to see it in a map.
Yeah.
You know, I just can't do the visual. I think it's here. I need to know exactly what, what it looks like. So a map would be good. So in my opinion, this has to come back to me in a map.
Okay.
So I couldn't make a decision on even what level at this point.
Okay. We'll skip that one. Should we retire for here? Can we keep going?
Let's see what it is. What do you got?
What is it? What is it?
What do you got? Uh-oh.
Oh, my God.
Terminating system.
Yeah, we're going to have to come back to that.
Not much left of that. We're more than a three-minute talk.
Okay, how about active opportunities at the south end?
Does that conclude Blue Heron?
Oh, shit.
No, because it's not the district.
Oh, wait a minute. That's right. Wait. Do you have another call?
Yeah.
There we go.
I think we're going to have to...
Oh, it's Tumwater.
Yeah, this stops at 12.
This is down around Tumwater, the south end.
The Tumwater?
Yeah.
I'll be on.
Okay, so we'll have to probably talk about that, because I know...
No, it goes actually past Tumwater.
It does.
Yeah. Alright, so what we're going to do here, we have a couple minutes left, obviously. We're going to have to probably move, continue this...
Yeah.
To another time. And maybe, I don't, what we have coming up for April.
Well...
I like it. I do.
Glad it's working.
It's working. You know, this is good exposure here.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
That you get this stuff to all of us, if we can think about it on our own?
Absolutely.
And then bring it back to the next session?
Sure, that'd be great.
Then we'll be prepared.
Okay, that'd be great.
Let's do that. And also, Mr. Edgar has, in front of us here, done some legwork on some progress here. I think what I would suggest to Mr. Edgar is to also email this to us and describe all the efforts that you did on this.
Well, I would like very much just simply to take the first part, to explain how I take, what I got here on the spreadsheet. I got from the assessor's office, 2008, 9, 10, 11, and 12, the division of taxes, what, where the monies come from, what taxing districts. And I listed them down. And I thought that was important at the top, if we look at also at the ratio to assess market value, and you start to see how it starts to slim down in 2012. And you also see in between 2011 and 2012, in the URC plan area, current value compression's starting to take place.
Is this something you already emailed to the finance director and city manager?
No, I, I've got this...
This is our education.
I guess got, and so you start to see where the monies come from, and then you start to see the accumulative effect. So I took, I took the, those years, let's take like Clarkhamas County, I added the four years together, divided it by four, come up with an average, and then I added 1.3%, which is what is added to each year in assessed value, assessments, to arrive at a new figure for 2012, 2013. And then I, then I took that, and I added the five years together to give a five-year total. And then I took and compounded the next to create a 13-year to, from 13 to 18. So I have a 10-year estimated accumulation of what the, where the monies come from. So if we look at the school district, we go down to the Oregon City School District, we can see accumulatively that it's coming, getting up close to $7 million in a 10-year span, coming out of urban renewal. And what's important with this is each year that we continue investing into, into anything that does not create tax increment accumulatively within the urban renewal district that affects our URC, URC plan area current value, what we do is we're adding years on where we continue this outflow, or taking money away from, be it the Oregon City, the fire district, each of these entities listed here. So being physically responsible in how we take money requires some things. Another little thing down here, as we get into, if we did the cove project, and you see 35 million, what is the actual net revenue that we would derive from 35 million and new assessed value? And it would be 493,000. And if you take a look at the debt load of what the line of credit might be, when converted to a bond, all of a sudden, you start to see our cumulative debt load against how much revenue we're getting in. And it shows then this formula for identifying the financial sides of how we make investments.
This is good work, Paul. Thank you for doing this. Can you maybe email that out to everybody, including staff? Maybe you guys could take a look at that, David, and see what it looks like. Eric, I would ask that you would ask somebody from the school district to come in and speak to us about the money they're losing in urban renewal. Because it was my understanding, when Larry Didway spoke at the meeting, where there were lots of people, it was my understanding, it did not take money from school districts. But I just want to be clear. I just want somebody to...
I would like to explain it to you then.
I would like to have somebody come in.
They get 90% reimbursement from the state school fund. This then reduces the state school fund. And when we have this accumulative reduction from the state school fund over all of the school district, this reduces funds going to education.
I'm just asking for somebody from the district to come in.
If you didn't know, I do.
Okay.
Paul, I think we're, I think we're in a position, when we're discussing in terms of expertise, we, we want to draw on the expertise.
Yes.
And I think that's what Betty Mumm is requesting.
Please.
Okay. Alright, so, anything for the, Eric?
I just want to make a statement that the email that I sent out with the suggestions for the inventory, the current and proposed activities, along with the consortium core values, I'm adding that to the record.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
And is there consensus on inviting a school district representative to speak to the issue?
If I think of getting into an argument whether we should close a district or not, there might be a reason to do so. Other than that, I don't really...
The district would be able to address urban renewal issues.
Start with the superintendent. He spoke to it last time.
It's really the tax assessor we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Can we have the tax assessor come in and explain that?
Guys, if I might, I would just like to suggest you take a timeout on that argument.
Okay.
Both sides of it, and try to focus on these goals, so we can get those done before we budget. Actually, we're not going to get them done, based on what I see tonight, before we have to budget something.
Okay.
So let's, let's just try to focus on that. And I think you all probably know the effects on the district, and you may differ on whether or not those are worthwhile. But I think that's pretty evident. If it's not, Erica, either one would be eager to explain it to you. And if you still want us to have a district representative, we can do that after we get through the budget, if that's...
Okay.
Very good. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to just ask one thing. And we're kind of getting short on time for the budget committee. I think is, the meeting for the budget committee is April 24. And if we want to get through some of the prioritization, we might have to have a special meeting. We have a, we have a full agenda on the 4th.
Do we have, we don't have a meeting till 7 o'clock, right?
Right.
You have...
I have a photo session scheduled. I know, but why wasn't that scheduled like 10 minutes before 7? So we're stopping now, and then we're going to have, you know, 45 minutes to sit here and wait.
It's up to the commission. What would you like to do?
It doesn't seem that, I mean, we know any meeting that we're going to have with urban renewal is going to last longer than an hour. And especially one with a goal session which all, this is like the second or third time we've attempted some sort of a visioning process for the, for the Urban Renewal Commission. So I don't understand why we made that planning decision for a photo in the right smack down the middle of it.
Maybe we can do it on a separate night, where we don't have another meeting coming up.
Well, right, for this, for this little item here this evening, I think we do need to have a special meeting, just to, let's do a special meeting sometime, Eric, and get through this, because we do have the budget thing coming up.
Yes.
And we do, but as far as planning these things in the future, we probably should consider that. But right now, to get through this, let's have a special meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
Yep.
Would you like to start earlier? Would that be helpful?
Well, we've done that before, you know, but it's kind of hard on the special couple of us.
I can't, I can't get here before 5.
We could have done that tonight. We could have not had the photo session. I don't know what, it's not like this is a surprise that this was going to happen.
Just so you know, I cannot get here to meetings until 5.
No, but there's other ways we can resolve it.
That's fine.
So if we have a special meeting, and it's going to be all just us...
Just us.
And it can go on for whatever, so...
Yeah. I think that'd be good.
Until dawn, yeah.
Put that together?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And getting the pages emailed to us, we can all have time to prepare and be more concise.
Absolutely. Yes, we'll do.
Okay.
Thank you.
We good?
Yeah.
Alright, adjourned.